Mr. Blick, if we can bring you forward to do this. First thing I want to do is apologize to you, number one, is to put you in the massive amount of work that you had to do for this commission. I want to thank all the members of the commission for their work, so it was tremendous. I went to a number of meetings and you did a fantastic job. Now, there's some folks here, they came to almost all, they came to more meetings than I did, and saw the work that they did, and they said to me privately, "You did a great job," and so they're very, very, very good at that. I also have to apologize to you and Councilmember Candace. Saturday, we had a trash pickup. Both of you texted me, and I didn't pick up my phone until I was ready to walk out the door, and by that time, it was too late, so I would have apologized to both of you publicly that I messed up. So, I hope we're still friends and all of that, so, anyway, two things.
I might not come to the next one.
Well, this time, I will get the phone up and running and away you go, so. But with that, Larry, please proceed and talk about all the work that you folks have done on the City of Independence.
Mayor members of the council, good evening. I am Larry Blick, Chair of the Mayor's Advisory Commission. On July 7th last year, you appointed seven members to the Mayor's Advisory Commission on Ethics Reform. Our charge is to make recommendations for the establishment and implementation of ethics policies, programs, and enforcement. Due to a vacation, we did not meet until early September. After that, except for holidays, we met almost weekly. We apologize for the lengthy process. We tried to develop an ordinance that is thoughtful, workable, and well-balanced, one that will be useful for our city. Some issues required a lot of deliberation, and all conclusions were arrived at by consensus. In addition to myself, you appointed Alan Garner, former City Attorney from the city. He has forty years of municipal law experience. Jim Schultz and Scott Loverson have eighteen combined years as councilman.
I know Jim Schultz.
Sarah Wimmerly is a member of the Ministerial Alliance and former member of the Board of Ethics. Christine Hughes is a paralegal with Stetson LLC and Chair of the Board of Ethics. And Carol Salinas is a member of the Board of Ethics. Carol was present only part of the time due to serious illness, which we are pleased that she is doing very well. We began our research by looking for ethics codes of other cities and counties. Some of the codes we examined are listed in the slide. We looked at large and smaller cities, both in-state and out-of-state. Globally, we examined Kansas City, based on warrants, relaitha, Columbia, and Grief Court. Nationally, we found codes in places like Wichita, San Diego, San Antonio, and Minneapolis. We studied the National Civic Lace Model City Charter, our own city charter, and the independent ordinance establishing the Board of Ethics. We also consulted Missouri statutes and Missouri Ethics Commission documents. The first question is, why have a code of ethics? Ethics provisions foster public trust in the integrity of city government, and how does that occur? Newly-elected officials, newborn members, and employees come from many environments and experiences. They may be unfamiliar with the standards of conduct required in the public sector. They may do things which create suspicion about whose interests are being served. An enforced code of ethics serves as a check on improper or abusive behavior by city officials and employees. The code sets standards of conduct, disclosure requirements, and enforcement mechanisms. Seeing what is in the Code of Ethics gives the public trust that city government will be operated in a fair and impartial manner. When confronted with difficult situations, officials, employees, and those doing business with the government can consult the code about appropriate and prohibited conduct. So, to whom does the code apply? The Code of Ethics applies to all city elected officials, all members of boards and commissions, and all city employees. There are restrictions on former city officials and employees. The code also applies to those doing business with the city. It provides guidance to the public, campaign donors, those seeking city employment, and persons wanting approvals from the city. We begin the Code of Ethics with a statement of purpose. Public service is a public trust. In a democratic system, it is essential that the public has confidence in the integrity, independence, and impartiality of those who act on their behalf. To help maintain trust and confidence in our city government, it is necessary that all city officials and employees adhere to the principles of ethical conduct contained in the Code of Ethics and in the city charter. One should be scrupulous in avoiding the appearance of impropriety at all times. A major lengthy division of the code applies to current city officials and employees. The use of public office for private gain is always prohibited. City officials may not act in an official capacity on matters in which the official has a private financial interest clearly separate from that of the general public. Prohibitions include unfairly advancing or impeding private interests beyond that which is lawfully available to other persons. Some of what is in the ordinance pertains to accepting gifts, misusing confidential information, representing private interests before the city, having conflicting outside employment, using public property and resources for private purposes, soliciting campaign contributions from city employees, or having a financial interest in a contract or real estate transaction with the city. Disclosure and recusal are required in certain situations. So, why does the code apply to former officials and employees? First, former officials may not disclose confidential information prior during service as a city official or employee. Second, for two years, they may not represent private interests before the city. And third, during the first year, one may not have a financial interest in a discretionary contract with the city. Division four of the code addresses those who are seeking or have a discretionary contract with the city. Likewise, are those who are involved in negotiations regarding a real estate transaction with the city. It also speaks to those seeking land use decisions. So, what are appropriate contacts between city officials and these applicants? Concerning a discretionary contract, no contact is allowed by the applicant after, I'm sorry, no contact is allowed by the applicant after a request for proposals or request for qualifications is issued, except with the city official designated in the solicitation document. Regarding the purchase, sale, or lease of real property, contact is permitted only with the person designated to negotiate the transaction. Regarding land use applications, sometimes there are numerous communications from citizens or applicants explaining their project. These contacts can be helpful. It doesn't make sense to forbid these communications. So, we propose that an applicant may not seek a commitment prior to the vote on the application. A person or entity seeking council action must disclose all political contributions made to any member of the council during the previous twenty-four months. Also, no contributions may be made to city candidates for one year following a council decision. So, now, why have financial disclosure by officials?
Also, no contributions made.
The purpose of financial disclosure is to help give the public confidence in the integrity of the city government. Disclosing sources of income and ownership of real estate and businesses is necessary for the public to have confidence that the government's business will be conducted in an independent and impartial manner. You know about financial disclosure because you filed the Missouri Ethics Commission's Personal Financial Disclosure Statement, or BFD, when you filed for election, and you fill one out annually while in office. State law administered by the Missouri Ethics Commission requires annual personal financial disclosure statements to be filed by ten individuals in the city. They are the city councilor, the city manager, the city councilor, and the chief purchasing official. The city clerk identifies whom the MEC should notify each year to fill out the statement online. There are others in the independent city government who make final decisions or make recommendations where conflicts of interest could exist. So that the public will know if conflicts exist by those decision-makers, the proposed code will require financial disclosure statements from the following: the City Planning Commission, the Board of Adjustment, the Board of Building and Engineering Appeals, the Board of Ethics, the Industrial Development Authority, municipal judges, subordinate city managers, and department directors. Now, what about enforcement? MEC will enforce violations if only the ten positions previously mentioned are required to fill out the financial disclosures. However, if a city adds even one more position to the requirement, the MEC will still provide notification and use of the online disclosure form, but the city will have to enforce its ordinance. Just as now, the city clerk will notify MEC who are to file the PFDs. The MEC will notify everyone required to file the disclosures. The penalties included in the ordinance are identical to those in the state law and MEC guidelines. Enforcement will be the responsibility of the city council and the city manager. So, why have limits on campaign contributions? The National Civic League states that a substantial number of cities have enacted campaign finance laws. This trend indicates that increasingly large amounts of private money have permeated local elections. It creates a public perception that such money has a distorting influence on the democratic process. We agree with the National Civic League. Therefore, the proposed ordinance sets limits on campaign contributions. However, we did not address spending limits. How do you set the maximum amount an individual or entity may contribute? The recent state of Missouri constitutional amendment contains a $2,000 limit for a state representative. We suggest the limit in independence be one half that amount. Thus, no person or entity may make monetary or in-kind contributions to a candidate which cumulatively exceeds $1,000 for a primary election and $1,000 for the general election. Two final points about campaign grants. First, to counter the dark or hidden money issue, all mailings and electronic communications advocating for or against a candidate must provide the name and contact information of the person or entity responsible for the mailing. Second, individuals or entities which have or are seeking a contract greater than $50,000 with the city are prohibited from making campaign contributions. Similarly, to provide assurance to the public that the city council and mayor are acting in the best interest of the public and city government, one who accepts campaign contributions from a union or organization of city employees shall publicly disclose it before voting on a matter affecting that union or organization. Let's now turn to enforcement of the ordinance. The city charter requires having a five-member Board of Ethics. The previous council established the Board of Ethics by ordinance. There are some notable differences between the current ordinance and what is being proposed. What should be the scope of the board's responsibility? The current ordinance limits the board to rendering advisory opinions which have been requested by the mayor, council, and city manager. Also, other officers or employees may request advisory opinions about their own situation. Beyond issuing advisory opinions, we recommend expanding the role of the Board of Ethics to include receiving complaints, initiating its own investigations, and making findings and conclusions concerning alleged violations of the Code of Ethics. The next question is, but who can file a complaint? We debated the issue and concluded that any person who believes there has been a violation of the ethics laws may file a complaint. In fact, the ordinance requires that they do. If anyone can file a complaint, what about the possibility that an individual could file a complaint for mischievous purposes, causing difficulty or embarrassment for a political opponent or elected official? Our antidote to a nuisance is that a complaint must be accompanied by enough supporting information to convince the city councilor or the chair of the Board of Ethics that it merits consideration. Secondly, a person who knowingly makes a false statement in a complaint or proceeding before the board is subject to criminal prosecution for perjury and a civil fine. Third, if the complaint is deemed to be frivolous, the board may recommend prosecution and any other sanctions permitted by law. You might wonder if the Board of Ethics has too much authority. The code will be only as good as its enforcement. Keep in mind that the city councilor will be involved in the complaint process and may also render advisory opinions. And we believe that in the real world, the city councilor will be working closely with the board throughout the complaint process. The councilor will be helping the board write his findings of fact and conclusions of law and help in determining the appropriate level of sanctions. So, finally, the Code of Ethics will be only as good as city officials and employees know about it. Thus, the ordinance places responsibilities on the city clerk, the city councilor, and the city manager to make the code available to the public and to orient and provide training to officials and employees. Mayor, that concludes our presentation.
Mr. Blick, I can say thank you now for all the work that you did, or the committee did, and a little bit of questions, and I'll have, I probably got some questions too, but, anyone have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I have a question about the campaign contributions. There's a thousand dollars left, Mayor. Is that included if the campaign wants to donate to themselves a thousand dollars or more?
We did not address self-funding of a candidate or by a candidate.
Okay, so would they be able to or not?
I did answer your question.
The ordinance is actually silent on that.
Right, and anytime the ordinance is silenced, then you go to state law, and state law does allow self-funding. So, with the anticipation of this, when they had the discussion, there was clear understanding that if someone were of the means to go ahead and finance their own campaign, they certainly could. And there'd be no limit to that.
So, I guess my second question, how, so let's say a candidate was in another office before they signed up for this legislative body. Let's say they were a state senator or whatever, and they had a large campaign to do. How would, was that addressed, I mean, unless they brought it with them, because they can transfer it. Was that addressed in this, or thought about?
I think that would ultimately govern by state law and Missouri Ethics Commission.
Like, my, kind of, put a thousand dollars limit on there, and let's say somebody brought forty thousand dollars and you're kind of hamstringing, you know, the person who's trying to run against them.
I think our position is, you folks are all, have all run for office, you have a lot of experience. I think you can debate that and decide that, we're only an advisory citizens committee.
You talked about the Board of Ethics, you said you wanted to add two members to it, is that? The Board of Ethics, you said you wanted to add two members, did I hear that correctly?
No, the Board of Ethics has five members currently, and that's what we recommend.
Oh, I thought, I thought you said you wanted to add two more. I just, I guess my kind of thought on that is, those individuals are volunteers, and I don't know if any of them have investigative experience, so I'm not, I've got some watch going on, and I'm not really sure how to do it, but that's just a thought I've been throwing out there, so. All right, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please proceed.
Thank you for being so thoughtful and trying to think through all the permutations, because how we govern ourselves with our ethical behavior sets an expectation both in the community, but also people wanting to do business in the City of Independence. So, a document like this, I think, gives people a sense that we are minding our own house. So, I appreciate the enormous amount of time, and thank you for not charging the city for it, needing every week. On your slide that talks about penalties for false statement and frivolous complaints, has the opportunity for prosecution, should that be determined? Prosecution by who in what court?
Well, if it's a violation of the ethics code, that would go to the municipal court judge, but the recommendation would be made to the city prosecutor, information given to the prosecutor.
Okay, my next question was, you know, we produce our personal financial disclosures once a year, but they're retrospective, so I had a change, my husband changed jobs, and so I called the MEC, I was like, hey, I need to make an amendment to my personal financial disclosure because those circumstances have changed. And their advice was, don't send it to us, wait for the next year, which to me feels false, because if somebody wanted to look to see if I had any kind of conflict, they would not be able to do that until the following year. I did ask the MEC folks this question at the Missouri Municipal League training, and they said that the remedy for that is to send a letter to the city clerk making that disclosure. And so, I just, you know, having clear rules about things that happen in between times, I think, are really important because we want folks to feel confident that we are making honest judgments and votes. The thing about the PFD is, I can serve that online. A letter sitting in the city clerk's office, unless I know it's there, I don't know to go ask it. So, I just, I don't know that I have a question, but that seems like an area that could use a little clarity.
And I think that substantially, you should notify the city clerk and make an addition, just by memo or whatever, and the clerk can set up a process for you to do that. And this point will take, I don't remember if we covered that or not, but we did.
Yeah, I mean, it would still be incumbent on the city councilperson to declare a conflict and either recuse themselves or declare the conflict before the body in advance of their voting, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
I want to thank you and the committee for all your hard work as well. You know, to me, as elected officials, you know, this is really important, that we hold ourselves to a very high ethical standard, and I really appreciate all your effort on this. I just have, really, I've gone through most of your document, I haven't gotten through every last word of it, but I did have one question on one part, and that was, if you could talk a little bit about your thinking relative to that decision of the Board of Ethics will be final, there would be no appeal. That, I see pros and cons to that, and, you know, I'm just kind of wondering what your thoughts and your discussion was about that, because, you know, I've seen in some other situations where the inability to appeal the decision, you know, kind of lets people, you know, maybe in a little bit of quandary, and so, I just would be curious as to what your comments were on that. This is 116042.
Well, I guess I don't know, I think that's something you could talk about among yourselves as to, you know, I think the Board of Ethics, you know, these are citizens. They're going to be advised by the city councilor, the complainant or respondent, may have attorneys. There's going to be a lot of good information in there, and I think at some point, these issues need to be brought to a conclusion. And I think at some point, these issues need to be brought to a conclusion, and the penalties are not that so severe that these need to be, you would need to run around, find somebody else to give you a different answer. So I think there's value to having them look at it, look at it thoroughly, they have six months to come up with a final decision, and I would not be worried about the kind of decision they would make. I think they would more err on the side of not being out of bounds and being more balanced than anything. And the big kind of people you appoint, and that's important, as is with all of your boards and commissions, you have to appoint really good, balanced level of people that have a sense of fairness.
I appreciate that. I just wondered what your thoughts were. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I just, that was one thing that caught my eye, and I was kind of curious.
I think we did not, as we did this, we all did it, we thought it was the right thing to do, we did not have a lengthy discussion.
Understood. Okay. All right, well, again, I appreciate all the effort that went into this.
We have a esteemed member of the commission.
I think we saw the Board of Ethics as independent, both independent of the administrative line as an employee and subject to supervision, but also independent of the political process. So we wanted some entity, independent, to be able to make that decision, and without influence, and that's part of the Ethics Code. And they're really the only ones, and so it behooves you all, as a council, to appoint those on the Ethics Board that have that wisdom and that independence to make those decisions that are in the best interest of the city, as well as for all the employees and the council. So it's very important, those appointments that you make.
Appreciate that.
So you can see how good one-seventh of our commission was. And he was equal to all the others.
Appreciate that. That's all I have.
Anything else? Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
First of all, all I know, everybody else said, ladies and gentlemen, you put in an insane amount of work, so appreciate that. You clearly had too much fun and enjoyed each other's company, otherwise you would have not done this. So thank you very much.
You only came to the meetings because Scott brought the doughnuts.
Doughnuts?
Which I think is a conflict of interest.
And there's a big surprise, because one, there's no fluoride in the water, and two, he's a dentist, right? So you follow that up with...
We're accusing him of that.
Yeah, and you, of course, visited his office regularly, right, for cleanings? Uh-huh. You got little baggies with floss and the two things. Yeah. Do you have a couple of questions? One, the financial disclosures, so, and Mr. Robertson, having been the most recent member of this council, knows how hard it is to find people to serve on committees. Did you discuss how disclosures, those financial disclosures, might have a chilling effect on finding folks to serve on committees?
No, we didn't, because we all filled them out, and we didn't find it very chilling to fill them out. There's not that much to it, you're talking about, you're not asking about how much income someone has, it's just, where do you get your income? Do you own any businesses or properties, you know, that kind of thing? So it's just stating what we own, or if you own any companies or whatever, and you don't put down any bounds or any values, so I think once they see what was involved, it should not be a problem.
Got you. So you discussed that you didn't think that'd be much of an issue?
No, we, you know, we all, we all filled them out at some point, and it didn't seem to be a lot of work. We were just embarrassed about how little we had to put on.
Well, not all was said, very long, that's why I agree with you, Larry. I understand that completely. So part of the work that the Charter Commission is doing is, if you've, I don't know if you've seen it much, but, and I don't know how much this matters on this document or not, but they're really chopping down the charter, and you're familiar, very familiar with it, a lot of you are, and this document is wonderful, but it's big. And the charter is sort of wonderful, but also sort of old nowadays, and it is big, but becoming smaller. Of course, the voters will have to decide whether it becomes smaller or not. This mayor may not become part of the charter, who knows where this will end up, we don't know. There's a chance this document becomes smaller, or it may stay the same, who knows? Did you talk about that? The size of it, the length of it, the breadth of it?
Yes. They, in fact, the City Council was required to implement the charter by a series of ordinances. That's why in the charter can be written, the charters, more like presentation to write, it just lists some things, and the council should adopt an ordinance that covers that, those things. And it takes a lot of pages, if you want to make sure it's balanced, and it's understandable, and it's can be refuted, and it's clear. So I don't see how you would reduce the ordinance without eliminating some of these just requirements.
Yeah. Well, it's not, and that would be the key, it's not that we want...
I mean, there's, say there was a section on the Board of Ethics, you have to talk about how a complaint is made, what has to go into it.
Right.
How is it reviewed initially? How are the notice, what kind of notice requirements do we respond, etc. I mean, that all takes some pages.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand that, of course. What kind of considerations did you put into the decision when you decided, for example, to deviate from state law, when talking about campaign, for example, campaign contributions, introducing it from the state limits?
State law doesn't affect the City Council's, City Elections, in terms of the amount.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no regulation by the state, you can collect whatever amount you want.
You just thought that that's more than is appropriate?
Following what other cities are doing in terms of trying not to let too much money get into the campaigns. The other thing is that if you allow too many big donors, then that frees us out a lot of the common people in the community who may want to run for office, but they don't have access to a lot of money. So they, we have to try to, I'm sorry, level the playing field, so that the average person, as well as the wealthy, can all do their civic duty by offering to serve as City Council.
Was there any discussion about declaring whether you were a certain party or not in municipal elections?
The charter, present charter says that neither the nominating commission nor a ballot allows for the designation of a political party on the ballot. But it also says that during a campaign, you can use the designations if you want. Now, we did discuss that, and we recommended to the Charter Commission that they use language that's in the bottle charter, which tries to keep the nonpartisan aspect of the elections nonpartisan all the way through, and not use any designations of political party. And we had a call, and I know the mayor's office had a call, fixed on the last election, and so we did talk about it.
Did you, did you think about, and I'm kind of jumping around a little bit, did you think about campaign, total amount of contributions that could be raised in a single campaign cycle?
No, no, we didn't. We thought that the limit on who can, how much a person or an entity can contribute was more important, because that is what communicates a suspicion that someone has more influence with the candidate that they get elected. It's all about the appearance of...
It's been too long, Larry.
But you got to keep the microphone in front of you, Larry.
It's been too long. You were more concerned with the individual influence of single parties or something?
Or a company, or a business, or, you know, some organizations, yes.
Got you.
And it has all, a lot of it's about perception. A candidate may believe they're not influenced, but is what does the public or the voter think when they see it? And so much of the Ethics Code is to give the appearance that you're trying to be fair and impartial, and everything isn't.
Sure. I think that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commandee, I sure appreciate your time, effort, and dedication, thank you very much.
Anyone else, other thoughts? Well, first of all, I want to, Mr. Bligh, I want to thank you for chairing the committee and all the hard work you did. You certainly exceeded my expectations of what product would occur at the end, and you, in my opinion, produced a great product. I also want to thank Alan Gardner for his years of service to the city, but also his expertise. It was really interesting to hear his comments in your meetings with his breadth of knowledge and experience. Also, with Mr. Schultz, Mr. Robertson, I cannot say thank you enough for your work on the committee, because what you did as former councilmembers is you gave a really great light to real-life examples of what's happened to you in campaigns and how this could make our campaigns cleaner and more ethical in our city, so I really, really appreciate that. Sorry, while Larry's not here, but I want to thank her for her work on it, she did a great job of adding her perspective and her viewpoint on it. Christine Anne Hughes, you went above and beyond. I know you did a lot of the nitty-gritty legal work on this document, to put it in order and all of that, so with your expertise, you brought a lot to the committee and also to Karis Linas. We were, so looking forward to work on it. I know she had health issues, and I know she's feeling much better now, and it's great to see that, but also, she had been put on it too, and we were really grateful. But I cannot say thank you enough for all that you did. It was truly remarkable what you accomplished and what you achieved, and so from that perspective. And so that's what I'm going to do, is just say thank you. I have a whole host of questions. One question I have here, and this is a very, very extensive document, and this is a question related to the entire committee. Would your recommendation be that we take this as an individual section, because there's basically eight sections in it, and take each section individually and talk about it as a council? Or would you recommend that we take this as one document in entirety and work on that? Does anybody have any thoughts or recommendations of that, how this council would proceed with it?
Well, it all fits together.
Okay.
I mean, you can't have any of it without the Board of Ethics section.
Right.
And I think you could end up a disjointed mess. I mean, why would you, why would you take it, you mean to vote on and approve if there weren't separate ordinances, or what?
Yeah, that was, I just wanted to see if your committee has talked about that and made a recommendation for us on how we should proceed with it.
We think though, it's only going to make sense.
It makes sense, irony.
If there are changes you want to make within it, you know, that's your prerogative.
Okay. No, I appreciate that, because that was a question I had, is how do we proceed as a body with regards to this, and how do we, how do we do it? But I certainly want to give everyone here...
Now, in our meetings, we went section by section by section, but then we had to make sure it all tied and fit together. In your discussions, it might be most helpful to take Division Two, current city officials and employees, and discuss that, see if there are any changes you want to make, then move to former city officials and employees, and we work on it a section at a time, check it off, and then just move the way through it.
Okay. So we could, as a body, take it a section at a time, but we would certainly have to make sure that we work with Mr. Langford and his team and his group to make sure that we don't have any conflicts of interest by, the changes we make here might have an impact on the document in the back end. And if I'm hearing you correctly, that's an important thing for us to consider.
Yes.
So we could take it a step at a time, but if we did, making sure that we don't miss anything in the backside, or if we eliminate it here, does it impact a section in the backside? Okay, very, very good. But I really do like the fact that you have a thousand dollar limit, and I think it's imperative that unlimited, it's always bothered me, and we talked about this when I was a state legislator, it always bothered me if there was unlimited campaign contributions for elected officials on city level, when at the state level, both for the governor and lieutenant governor, all the statewide offices, as well as state representatives and state senators, all had campaign contribution limits. The other thing that bothered me extensively was this, you, as a city elected official, you can receive gifts and not report them, and that's always bothered me. And so when I was elected, I wanted to make sure that we addressed that issue, and you did, and I think that's, that's excellent added, because I think it's important that elected officials don't take gifts. You don't get tickets to baseball games. When I was an elected official prior, prior to me taking office, we actually, in the land of, well, actually, it was the Clean Missouri who did that through a petition process, it was not something legislature did to themselves. A petition process did that, and it was just, in my opinion, just imperative not to take any gifts, but I had colleagues who literally took between ten, fifteen thousand dollars a year in gifts, trips, baseball tickets, playoff tickets, all kinds of things. And I just think that's egregious when you're, when you're talking about lobbyists giving you those kinds of gifts, and then the influence that they have. So I am grateful that you addressed those topics, I think those are very, very important topics, and I think it's really important for us as a city, we don't need to talk about what's happened with our city and the image that it's had on our city, but I think this is a really great step going forward in this, and I cannot say thank you all to your committee for all the work you kept. Anyone else in the discussion? Mr. Bligh, thank you very much, and thank your committee for all the work you did, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you, sorry to interrupt. Turn it over to you for the next topic, if you can brighten that or tee it up for us.
That's quite all right, Mayor, I was actually just, I can't figure the City Prosecutor out of the way, because he was going to address this item, the item, of course, being the ordinance that the City Council had first read on last week regarding the loitering. City Prosecutor has a couple of comments, and then really just wanted to provide a forum for the council to have a conversation prior to that ordinance coming back next week.
Thank you. Mr. Langford, please proceed.
Thank you. I would first received notice that a council member was interested in amending our loitering ordinance on May 5th, and on May 23rd, I received a proposed ordinance, and I'm not exactly sure who drafted that, it wasn't me, but I took that ordinance that I received, and I made some adjustments to it, specifically limiting the times that a person could be found lying, sleeping on a public sidewalks. And then that was amended further to reduce the time even more, and I think that's what's up for the second reading on June 20th. It's my understanding that the study session packet, there is another version of this ordinance that does away with the time constraints and deals with distances from public residences or from housing. or from housing. And I believe that's what's pending right now. And I'm available for any questions that you have on this, or my opinion, my legal opinion, whatever you like.
Okay. Any discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So just for reference, I'm the one that requested the ordinance, which I did, I remember the first one, I didn't really, it wasn't really what I wanted. Somebody asked, or I was asked this manager, to get me on something that I did more like. And I think Mr. Cogburn, the second one, currently what he would do, he would prohibit sitting, lying, or sleeping on a public property, including but not limited to sidewalks, public right-of-way, and public infrastructure within one every feet of a residential property. That's the amendment currently that I plan on trying to make a motion to at the next meeting. I've had, I have had a couple of people contact me regarding this, and their only concern is that they're about the sitting and possibly near a bus stop, because there's not mentions of a lot of the bus stops, and people may sit down, and, you know, obviously wouldn't want them, you know, inside or arrested for something like that. So I may go back to Mr. Cooper and ask him what we can do about that. But, and I asked this to be moved to a study session because I just kind of wanted the other council members to put it, and I was actually asked to come out as we move it here. So I guess that's all I have. If there's anything else, thank you.
Anyone else have a discussion? Please proceed.
We already have loitering restrictions that are under books. Do you think that this particular addition adds, or do you feel as though the existing rules that we have cover this issue?
Mr. John Mayfield asked me to respond to that question in an email from, it was soon after the ordinance was presented, I think it was in early May. And my position was that the current ordering could be used to enforce these types of violations.
And so at this point, we would be asking our police that they have the latitude to intervene if someone called, somebody's sleeping on the sidewalk in front of my house, and they called the police. Obviously, that's not an emergency issue, but they'd be able to come and ask the person to move on the way that things are currently running.
Yes, I don't see a problem with that.
You know, I always worry about the idea that we're going to arrest people. We, Mr. City Manager, can speak to how much room or no room that we have in our city jail. So we don't really have a mechanism to arrest and hold people for being in a place that they're not welcome to be. And the hard part is, you know, arresting your way out of poverty has never been a particularly effective mechanism. It moves people. I understand, I understand that part. I really prevail upon the city to work with agencies who are trying to address the root issues that are allowing people to exist in a state of homelessness. I think that that really is the better mechanism. And so I come back to Mr. City Manager, do we have room right now if we were to enforce, enforce that with arrest? Do we have a mechanism for that?
The couple of questions, or a couple of answers I'll give to that. One is the budget the council will vote on next Tuesday. We had to provide a recommendation in there that the council increased detention housing by $55,000 this coming fiscal year due to the increased cost that we're seeing at our various partner prisoner housing facilities. So apparently, the city utilizes Johnson County, Missouri, and the Lawrenceburg area, Andrew County, up in the St. Joseph area, a few others, but those are currently the ones. Increased cost for per-day housing, as well as the transit cost to and from. So we would need to factor that in if there were additional rest, made that that cost has gone up just doing what we're doing now. We see an additional $55,000 needed to sustain that level of daily housing. Judge Helm has been very outspoken in letting city staff know, and I believe he's contacted other members of the governing body as well, that there are capacity issues at the various prisoner housing facilities. The two I mentioned is both the additional facility, that that's run into any manner of issues. And even once built, I think that they are already planning to be fully inventorying with the folks going through their various sentencing processes, that there won't be capacity there. So very long with the answer, we are short on supply right now, and if there were, you know, funds to be available, certainly additional prison housing space would seem to be needed to keep up with the demand that we presently have today.
I certainly know that folks who are working in the area of homelessness are finding that as they begin to move people from the streets to housing, one of the challenges they have is paying off fines and other issues that are all barriers to people being able to move back into employment or into housing. So I really encourage us as a body to think about approaches to homelessness that work and that are models out there. There are some fantastic organizations doing amazing work, and I think that that is a wonderful place for us to expand our time, energy, and resources. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I'm not going to call anybody out, but I do, I have emails from city staff, caution for all conversations with city staff, that the situation I had in my district, the fiscal ordinance would not apply to it. And that's the reason for the amendment. I'm not trying to criminalize homelessness. I'm not, you know, I don't want to have anybody arrested, but we can't have a situation in residential neighborhoods where the homeless take over that area. We just can't. And I guess it's all right until, you know, I guess, especially if everybody else is black. I don't know. Maybe this isn't the perfect solution, but it is an enforcement mechanism. And I think our police department is very good, and, you know, they have the determination to make, just like any other thing. So anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else have other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
If I can, Mr. City Manager, do you mind if I, or Mr. Mayor, if I...
Please proceed.
...discuss with Mr. Langford that the amendment is written, says that it's, it allows said liar, sleep on public property, including but not limited to, so any public property is parking lots, sidewalks. Is that how you read that? It's anything the city owns.
I'm sorry, Captain, was that for me?
That's for you, Mr. Langford.
Yes.
So that's out front here, it's behind the building, it's any, literally any ground of public that, if you take a nap in a public park, or a local park, or grass, a bench, a bus stop, take your pick. It's, it's very broad, yes. I was looking at the, I was just trying to look up the state statute that Missouri passed. I know that state on land is illegal. I'm not an expert on that. I think this sort of matches that with, I don't know if you were, Mr. Councilmember Stewart, was, is that what you were going for, to sort of match the state statute? Or did you look at that at all?
I did not look at the state statute. I asked for, and we're missing this one, Mr. Cogburn did, and I did say I wanted it within so many feet of a residential property. So now, I mean, is a residential property mine or building?
No, I got you.
So it's for residential.
That's what you're shooting for.
Yes. I'm not, you know, that's what I'm shooting for.
Well, I got you. I understand your problem, and I understand your concern and what you're shooting for. The problem is this solution does criminalize homelessness. It's a bit of a catch-22 because, no, we don't want homeless camps in our residential neighborhoods. Nobody does. But it's not going to do any good to create a taxi service to and from the jail or municipal court out of our police department, because that's all that will happen if they did enforce it. And the 12 patrol officers we have at any given time, when we're lucky, don't need to be doing that in general. They need to be doing other, much more important things. And they do have, our ordinances do cover enough to arrest folks for loitering if it's necessary, so that doesn't solve the problem. Mr. City Manager, is there a solution to this? What's your, what's, what's your going to tell you on this?
I think if there were a solution, our country would have implemented it by now.
Mr. Langford, you've got a chief of police back there, we've got homeless outreach folks in the audience. I know it's frustrating, I know Mr. Stewart's frustrated, his constituents have reached the end of their rope. Certainly, we're frustrated up here. It is a tough spot to be in. Here we sit. Anybody in this room have an idea? We've got a chief back there. No chief. Well, if he has an idea...
We're not, we're not going to bring people up who have not been vetted and not been asked, prepared, and be here. We're not going to do that. And so if this council wants to change that rule, they can change, they can make a rule, but I'm not going to bring directors up here when they have not been asked to address an issue, or not been asked to discuss an issue. So that's a ruling from the chair, and if we want to make a policy on that, I've been talking about rules for this body for quite some time. That's what I'm going to rule this evening. This is my opinion. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Mr. Mayor, I understand that, but when we're discussing issues such as this, where we have issues of law, compassion, I think the council's deserving to be able to ask field experts their opinion, and I don't, I don't think he's unprepared. I think that what he may be able to give to us is information that helps us get a better, more informed decision on direction. And maybe he can bring some insight that we don't see, and that's what field experts do. I would like to hear from him if possible.
I have a suggestion on this whole process that would be even more expansive than that, is that, just like the Ethics Commission worked an entire year on that issue, and it was complicated, it was large, and it took effort and thought. This has been my concern for this body since I've been elected, that of having one individual bring something to the city council puts us in a position where we end up like this, where we have something that is not ready. This is my opinion. When we, as a body, are going to set in this dust and propose an ordinance, in my opinion, that ordinance has been vetted, and that ordinance is ready to be approved. It is clear in front of this body that this ordinance, the way it stands, is not ready to be approved. Now, I am happy to be on a committee for that body. I am happy to assign a committee. I'm happy this body elected a committee to do that. But in my opinion, we need something more expansive where we can get the chief and other people involved around the table and say, and then also folks that are homeless advocates. I think it would be, it would be extremely, 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 extremely damaging to the city's reputation to approve an ordinance like this next week, and the impact that it would make on our reputation and everyone here, I think that's very important. So I'm not looking at this as, if this is a good process, if this is a good ordinance or bad ordinance, I don't think this ordinance is ready.
But, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but that's the purpose of the study session, that we get to have field experts, people who are invested in these areas for topics for discussion. So if we know how to contend for it, I think that, first of all, I think the rules allow it, and I think that it should be allowed. And that's why I'm working here in a study session. That's why it was brought to us, to study, to discuss. If we can't do that, then we'll let you make that decision.
Right. And I'm of the opinion right now that we refer this back to the council member to decide how he would like to proceed with this. I would not like to see it in its current form, be brought to the city council to be finalized on a second reading at our next meeting. I just don't think it's ready because there's just too many issues on this, and it's just too broad of a question. And is homelessness an issue in our city? No question. Is it important to address it? Absolutely. Is this the right format to have a lengthy discussion about it? You know, I want, I want this to be our policy from this body, that if we're going to bring people to come up to that, to that podium, that they are in fact, know that they're going to be asked to do that, they're prepared to do that, and they've been, they've been given the questions we're asked for, so that they are fully vetted and prepared to have that. I want the directors to be confident when they are in fact in public position. That's my position on it. If this body would like to overrule me, then let's make rules to that effect. But I'm ruling of the chair this evening is that I'm not going to bring anybody else up here other than Mr. Walker and Mr. Langford. So they knew that they were going to talk about this, and they knew that there was going to be discussion.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I understand at least, I mean, we're assuming that the experts of the field are not prepared. Can you at least ask them if they are comfortable covering this topic? Should they, should they not be prepared to discuss it? You may be surprised. Yeah, but I think it's deserving of the question. I think this council deserves to ask that question, and I'm asking for you, because there's no rules against it, I'm asking that you have asked the chief if he is prepared, or maybe one of the deputy chiefs. We have a plethora of people that I would consider field experts, and I think that's what study sessions are about. And let's study the issue. We're here at 8:05. We can do this a little longer. Let's get it right before we go have another read. I think the rules allow it, and you should allow that rule to be enforced.
Councilmember, I'll give you the deference on this, but I just want this body to know. I, going forward, will not allow a director to be brought to that podium at any time without them being informed ahead of time that this is going to be the topic, that they're on the agenda, and they're prepared with the questions that we have. I will allow it this time, this deference to you and this respect and courtesy to you, but it is going to be my policy going forward, that that's it. And if this body wants to put rules into place, I'm happy to have those discussions. And if the rules are decided by this body, or that's going to be the way we run, then I will defer to the majority. This is a democracy, but right now, I do have the gavel. And with that being said, go ahead.
And one more thing, if you want to change the rules, bring it to this council to vote. For right now, the council rules allow it. If you want to change that, then you need to bring it to us as a council rule change, and we'll vote on it. But as of right now, tonight, the rules allow it.
And I'm saying this body going forward, I hold the gavel, and I will in fact exercise that gavel, and we're not going to discuss this anymore. Mr. Walker, do you think that your chief of police is comfortable coming in to discuss this issue as we go forward?
I do.
Chief Dustin, please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Adam Dustin, Chief of Police for the Indianapolis Police Department. A lot of what I have, just in the point of brevity for everybody's time, is going to harken back to what... harken back to what Effie O'Brell brought forward with the ARCH program earlier. I will tell you that I think his modesty and humbleness could not be more understated. He is frankly a rock star, and I think that that program needs to have time to work. It has shown a lot of success in the cross-agency collaboration that is going on, but I also think it's important for the topic of this conversation, with respect to Councilmember Stewart, and, and I think everyone on the council, it's not lost on any of us that someone defecating in a stormwater drain, someone creating a noise disturbance at all hours of the day or night is hard, it's a difficult challenge. However, what I would maybe posture or posit all of you for consideration would be, that is the police department the first mechanism that should be the appropriate mechanism? I agree with Councilmember Stewart, we have an incredible police department that is full of incredibly wonderful, capable men and women that go out there and serve each and every day. But this is a deeply, deeply multi-layered social issue that faces our, all of our communities. And while the police department is there, and I agree with Mr. Langford, in terms of the ordinances that are there, they are, they are there, but we also have officer discretion when it comes to how we enforce that. And as Mr. Walker pointed out, our jails are just overrun right now, both from capacity of resources, where it comes to resources that are on the street. Many of you, many, many, many of you, and I appreciate this, have taken the opportunity to ride with our community service officers. You've seen the incredibly compassionate work that officer, that will often, officer perform on a daily basis. But, we, we talk about the outreach services. This is a multifaceted problem, and it's going to take a multifaceted solution, one that is not going to be solved here tonight, one that is not going to be solved probably in a very quick quarter. I will tell you to give a shout out to the collaboration that is ongoing, Councilmember McCandless knows this all too well, the Eastern Jackson County Shared Services Committee is a mark committee that is there, and the American Regional Council that is there, working on these issues. Amherst at that table as well, along with multiple different agencies. And we don't have a finite solution, otherwise, again, to Mr. Walker's point, we would have already brought it. It's going to take time, it's going to take resources to throw that, but something like the ARCH program, again, look at the title of that, Alternative Response to Community Health. It is an alternative response, it is something that is new, it is something that is very promising. We have to take that bite of the apple where we can get it. Effie O'Brell is, like I said, a very, very, very capable and passionate individual, and him leading this cause and our support, I can tell you that without a doubt. I give you my word, and I give the community my word. We have been supportive of this from the police department's standpoint of Mr. O'Brell and the fire department's efforts here, and we've continued to engage and be supportive of that. Major Kelsey of our Special Operations Division as well, as well as Deputy Chief Somerset, our Field Operations Bureau Commander, taking this, this issue very seriously, they're very passionate about this issue, as all of us are. Again, not lost on us, I'm not trying to grandstand here, make a point, but it's not lost on us, what it's like to live in those neighborhoods, I've experienced in my neighborhood as well. So, we will continue to combat this issue. I just, I implore you all, please be very cautious before we send the police department as the first mechanism of a solution, rather than maybe as the last measure.
Mr. Mayor, please proceed. Councilmember Stewart, I have, I've got an ask for you, and it's really for Chief Dustman and City Manager and Councilmember Stewart. You certainly have the right to pursue this, I'm not going to ask you not to, but what I'm going to ask you to do is make time for a call or a meeting, if you would, if Council, if City Manager would arrange it. If you three could participate in the call, maybe get the mats, if you would. If you guys could carve out an hour or so, see if you could consider an alternative mechanism, get something in place. We don't want to damage what little efforts we have in place for our homeless folks out here. We don't want to take away your right to pursue this, Councilmember, but we also don't want to damage your efforts either. It's a simple ask, and if it doesn't work, Councilmember, that's fine. But would you consider that, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So, the police department was not my first mechanism. It wasn't, so anybody that thinks that, they're wrong. My first mechanism was to call the Councilmember Hobart. And, and he got on there, and this party, or not removed, he helped her go somewhere, I think to a homeless shelter. Three weeks later, she was back. My second mechanism, I contacted the City Manager, is, is there anything illegal about this? My understanding was there was not, and she was sleeping on a storm train. And order for, the loitering ordinance to apply would have to be more than one person, so it would have to be two. But I don't want to make this about one person, because this could happen anywhere with any amount of people. And that's the reason this ordinance came up. Do you know how many times the police department responded? Multiple times. The ambulance was there multiple times. I don't know if your heart shows that we're there, but, but multiple times, and there she sat for a month, all day, all night, throwing her trash down the storm train, and throwing God knows what else down the storm train. And, like I said, it's really not about her, it's about protecting our residential neighborhoods, protecting our property values, and keeping control of our city, because we're not going to end up like San Francisco. I mean, you think 10 years ago, you think they thought it was going to happen there? No. And maybe this, maybe this isn't the solution, but as the City Manager said, you know, if somebody joined the solution, I guess everybody ended up living, and I don't know. So, sure, I'll schedule a phone call, so.
I want to point to that to Councilmember, and you're, you're correct, and I know it's frustrating, as people have said, I understand that there's frustration there, but I, just for the point of, of solution-based, and we can discuss this in further detail with any and all of you, but there are some limitations as far as the, the law, we talked about the state law and cabin on, on state right-ofways and state property. If we have an ordinance that, part of that law that was passed by the state legislature, if we have an ordinance that we cannot enforce based on resources, or that we actively do not enforce, then we subject ourselves to liability and a suit from the Attorney General that would eliminate state funding. So, that's another part of that conversation. Another piece of that as well is, we have, as, and I'm going to defer to Mr. Langford's area of expertise, but when you start with overly broad language, or have overly broad language, we subject ourselves to what the federal courts have now done, which is make any sort of target on, on a target population, which did not happen with our pain handling, because we used it as pedestrian safety and traffic safety. When you target a specific group, like the homeless, it becomes unconstitutional, so we have to, we have to be very careful for that, and I'm sensitive to that, as I know you are too. I put our men and women out there every day to enforce those ordinances, so in good faith, if, if they're enforcing something, then it's unconstitutional. So, again, we have to have broader conversations, but those are important to, to think into the, you know, in terms of the broader conversation. And again, harking back to where we started this with the ARCH program, the foundational building blocks of trust, when you talk about an outreach that you made, and they were in some sort of a response center, or transitional housing, whatever it was, for three weeks, that's three weeks of peace, and I know that seems very, very minimal to a residential area that's dealing with someone that comes back to back and back, and that's, that's all they see that becomes their life. But three weeks of respite is nice, when you have, okay, she's back now, do we go reengage that subject, and are we able to build upon the trust that we have with those community partners and get her back on, on track? You know, oftentimes, we have substance abuse and other things that are turning points of coping mechanisms because of what's going on or not going on in someone's life. And so, we're, we just have to be able to use that trust. If we put handcuffs on somebody more often than not, just as a general rule, yes, that's an important tool, and we're there as a tool, but when we put handcuffs on somebody more often than not, that is a, a very definitive breaking of that trust.
Please proceed.
So, it's easy to talk about what a complex issue this is. Chief Dustman, I appreciate your acknowledging that. I, I just want to share that Councilmember Perkins and I, and a group of really thoughtful, committed folks who work in a variety of service areas, are working hard and meeting regularly on the issue of homelessness, because arrest back in three weeks, whatever, it solves nothing for anyone. And so, I, I just, I, I hope that the city gives us the grace of a little bit of time, and as we are pulling this together, working across municipalities, across municipalities, working with them in America Regional Council, trying to come up with regional solutions, figuring out where folks go that is safe for them and safe for citizens. So, I, I hate to throw stones without being part of a solution, so I just would like to let you know that there are folks working on this really hard. Thank you.
Any else other discussion, other points, questions?
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Please.
This goes back to what Councilmember Hobart was saying regarding the recent Missouri law that was enacted. It went to effect on January 1st of this year, and I think it's, it was House Bill 1606, according to the notes that I've made. And even before this went into effect, there was a lawsuit filed, and that's still pending. So, this language is still played out. The state law that is in effect bans sleeping in state parks, sand under bridges, is very broad, and doesn't have any time limits, doesn't have any distance limits, it's just very broad, and it is being challenged right now. When I received this ordinance from Councilmember Stewart, the research that I did, I found that the Ninth Federal Circuit declared a ordinance very much like this in Boise, Montana, or is it Boise, Idaho, Boise, Idaho, you should know my states. In Boise, Idaho, found an ordinance that was broad of sleeping out public, unconstitutional, and it was a violation of the Eighth Amendment. The Supreme Court did not decide to hear an appeal on that Ninth Circuit decision, which says something in and of itself, because if the Supreme Court doesn't want to hear it, then that's kind of law. And so, I based the amendments to Councilmember Stewart's ordinance on that, because I do think you can't have some time, place, matter, limitations, and I don't think that that in and of itself is unconstitutional. But I did want the council to know that this current state law for the state of Missouri is pending right now, and is up on appeal.
Any other discussions, or comments, or anything like that? Chief, thank you very much for your participation. Anyone else other questions, comments before we wrap up? Okay, so, Councilmember, anything else on this one? Yep, perfect. Okay, thank you. And we've got staff reports here, so board commission reports, so please proceed.
We've got four commissions that have made, or that we have recommendations for appointment for. Start with, the recommendation has been made to reappoint Josh Goldner at Point Mark Sherer as members to the Heritage Commission. There's a resolution set for the 6/20 agenda, if there's no objections. Okay, a recommendation has been made to appoint Charlene Trailer as a member of the Human Relations Commission, also on 6/20, no objections. A recommendation's been made by Councilmember Steinmeier to reappoint Edward Medley as a member of the Planning Commission, it's on 6/20, no, as long as there's no objections. And the last one is a recommendation's been made to reappoint Mark Sherer as a member of the Independence Areas Truman Ward Commission, also on 6/20, no objections. That's all you have.
Anyone else other discussions on those? With that, we will call this meeting adjourned. Oh, excuse me, Councilmember McCandless wanted to make one comment.
I just would invite people to come to the Juneteenth celebration on June 19th, from 10 to 6 p.m. We will have food and music, and it will be a lovely event, so if you can join us, we'd be delighted. Thank you.
And where's it going to be at?
I'm sorry, at the Uptown Forum.
Very good. Thank you all, have a great one.